Okay. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Monday, April 25th, 2016. We're short, let's see, we've got seven of us today. No, we've got six of us today. It's Brian Carp's father had a very serious operation today and so we're on draw. Our thoughts are with Brian and his dad. And obviously it's better for him to be with his dad tonight as opposed to being with us tonight. I'd like to start by thanking HCAM for videotaping this meeting and it's always very helpful for us. From the agenda standpoint, we're going to have a pretty short one relatively, not to say that we won't get out any earlier. But the nine o'clock Pulte hearing is basically what the few members were at. They really realize that they cannot continue until we get the full board after the election. And particularly Brian, it would have been his second absence, et cetera. So they've asked for us to withdraw. We'll talk more about that at nine. So that puts a little bit of a hole in it. So we'll spend probably a lot more time on sidewalks and a few other things that are coming up for the board. So before I open the public hearing for 151 Hayden Row Street, you've got six of us, special permit, take six votes unanimously. And your question to you is, do you want to go forward tonight or do you want to go, continue to the next meeting so that we can, so you could have one dissenter?
We're prepared to go forward tonight.
Okay. Okay. Well, then I will open the public hearing, 151 Hayden Row Street. It's a special permit lot with historic structures. Proposes to create a new lot with a historic structure, which is the house, that does not meet the minimum frontage and area requirements. And why don't you kind of start and explain what you're trying to do?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name is Doug Resnick. I represent Phil and Donna Tadaro, who are trying to have the house at 151 Hayden Row Street, which is next to Water Fresh Farm, the marketplace, be set aside on its own lot in order to preserve it as a historical structure. And that's what the 210117.2 allows us to do. So our first stop, of course, naturally, was at the Historical Commission. And we had obtained just a ton of information from, oh, the recent part of history, I guess, from Dale and the history of, this was originally where Dan and Charlotte Colella, who owned the grocery store, made their homestead with the six girls. They purchased it in the 50s. The store was already open. And Dan went on to plant a variety of fruit and nut trees in the area. That's in back of where the marketplace was now. One of the buildings on the property was actually used as a farm stand right out on Hayden Row Street. Let me just throw out the plan here. This is the house that faces Hayden Row as in all the pictures. This is the building that was, I'm sorry, this was the farm stand. And Dale told me that Chain of Sisters, you know, looked forward to school starting in the summer because they worked basically all day and all night during the summer on the farm. The Colella family farmed other parts of Hayden Row. But more importantly, we thought the house was built around 1880. Apparently, Dr. Yankee brought to the Historical Commission meeting a mass Historical Commission analysis of the property and indicated that went back probably further into the 70s, was first owned by Mr. Phipps, later owned by a family that lived there until the Colellas bought in the 50s. And in accordance with the definition of historic structures, which is in the definition section of the bylaw and also in the Historical Commission's Chapter 125 in the general bylaws, you know, he's talking about both the association of the property with other, with Hopkinton business as it was developing in the late 1800s along Hayden Row Street. And there was a mix of farmers and people that worked in the shoe factories and so forth. Now, I don't know if that made it into your packets, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't know that.
Okay. We have a few extra copies.
Okay.
The resulting lot that you would like to create for the historic structure is basically here. That leaves exactly 5.0 acres for Water Fresh to maintain its agricultural classification standing, not a 61A. And we just think that there's no downside. One of the, the reason it got to be this way was when Todd, when Phil and Donna hooked up with Jeff Barton and decided to make Water Fresh Farm and do the partnership they dreamed of together, it was necessary, when they got around to doing the market, it was necessary to get financing. And the financing was from one lender and the one lender wanted to have one parcel and so forth. And so all this was subject to the original mortgage. Now, not only do we want to get, I say we, Phil and Donna want to get their house back, but it's also 100% okay with the lender to do so. And that's why we're here. There will be, you know, sometimes I know some of these other petitions have involved some kind of quid pro quo or, you know, if you do this, we'll give you that. There's nothing that's being asked for here. We're just going to keep the house in its present condition.
Ready for questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't I start off with a few questions? 5.00, are you cutting it too close?
Um...
You're, somebody's done the math pretty well.
The guys at Waterman Design have, yes.
Okay. So you're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because, you know...
Yes, sir.
Because...
There's a lot writing on it.
There's a lot writing on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. At one point, I've heard about plans to put a restaurant in the house.
That's no longer...
That's no longer there. Because if you separated the parcels, you couldn't get, there's no way you could, I'm not sure you can classify it under the farm stand anyway. That might be a stretch, but now, but things have been stretched as they are.
Yeah, that's a long part of the plan.
Okay. So that's not a plan, okay? Should the town receive a historic preservation restriction on the house if we are going to grant this on that? And I'm thinking the exterior. That's a question, you know, where we're granting something special, yes?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that the restrictions have been required in other cases where this has been done. They are, we've reviewed them and they're very, they're extremely cumbersome and we would prefer if that not be a condition.
Well, if my memory is right, we've only done one other one.
112 is one that I know about.
That's the only one I could find.
112 is Easy Street, right?
But I guess, along with all the historic structures in town and there are lists of them just along Hayden Row Street, you know, no one's asking for a special...
Well, we did one on Abbott Farm, for sure.
I think that's a little different situation.
Yeah. I don't know.
What do we do on Abbott?
Well, on Abbott, the town got all the backlands with CPC money. And to kind of make the deal go, we allowed the trust for public lands to sell off the farm with a historic deed restriction on the house, exterior at least. And the land right around the house had an agricultural restriction, I believe, on it.
Got it.
So that's kind of what, but the town was, in part of it is spending a lot of money to buy surrounding open space, et cetera.
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, I think...
It doesn't seem like unreasonable.
That's why I'm asking you.
Right, for us, right? Because if you're going on apprentice, it's the, you know, historical nature of it, one of the things you want to preserve is the exterior of it. Does that make sense?
We are. It's been, it's, the exterior has been added on to over the years, but it was determined that as it sits now, it's a historical structure.
Well, I think from the historic structure, we have a vote from the Historic Commission that kind of puts it that, plus there's evidence that I think was presented here. So I don't have a problem finding that it's a historic structure. But, you know, I'm looking to Claire, because you're on the Historic Commission, don't we like to have...
I have a question. I was not at the President of the Meeting on the board voting, but I don't question its findings that based on the background of the house, that it is historic, has historic value. My question is more on the application of the bylaw. Is the house in danger? Is it endangered in any way?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Is there any danger of this house if this funding did not, if this was not approved? Do you have plans to demolish the house?
We don't have plans, no. No.
No.
Go forward, I can't...
I have, this is not from a historic standpoint. The reason I raise issues with it is that when this bylaw was developed by the Historic Commission, it was because there are, there are land development projects that come that the only way for the land to be developed is to take out the home to get at the land in back. And the house is in danger. And so this was developed to save a house where land is going to be developed in such a way that the house would be endangered were it not allowed a special type of a carve-out to carve out a substandard lot so that the house could be saved. And so I don't see that there is, that situation is occurring here. And I'm trying to take emotional and emotion and personal issue out of it because when you look at the application of a bylaw, you try to look at it from a neutral standpoint of regardless of the circumstances, this the way the bylaw was, what it was designed to do or is this some, what a misuse? I am worried about the slipper slope, if this could open up that simply because this is a home that's 75 years or older, this can be used to carve out a smaller lot that no one else could with their similarly small lot. There's lots of older homes in the town. Does this open it up that then anybody could come and want a small lot carved out to develop or use the rest of their land because they have this historic home that's sort of being used as the, as the golden picket? I'm worried about a slipper slope because it might be, oh, maybe it'll never happen. But if you apply it to one, then you're beginning to set policy and you're beginning to set precedent. And I'm not sure that that's what this bylaw, I know when it was designed, this was not what the intent was.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair. The respect in which the house is in danger is not so much from Phil and Donna, who intend to live there and continue raising their fam, they are all girls do, continue raising their family there. But if for some reason the entire operation, Water Fresh and the house, were sold together as one parcel, there'd be absolutely nothing to prevent that person from knocking the house down. And if we go forward and afford this protection, and I don't, I don't see anywhere where the bylaw hints at, other than saying it's to preserve historic structures, which I think is exactly what we're doing by this, you know, I don't know where any legislative history makes this more or less needed to do so. So someone, if we didn't do this tonight, okay, and, you know, 15 whatever years from now, Phil decides to sell everything as one piece, then the house is vulnerable. And that's, it's not the danger tomorrow in terms of the demolition permits that, you know, are also subject to a Historical Commission review, it's the danger in the future.
Well, I would think that, because again, you know, being in harmony with the general purpose of the zoning bylaw, and I still don't believe this was what the bylaw was designed for, but if the way it's written, it fits within it from a legal standpoint, I would hope that, right now, the way that's written, there's actually nothing that prevents a property that receives the benefit of this bylaw from later on being demolished. We have to clean that up and we haven't been able to do it for a year's warrant. Whether you go with a restriction or I would think if this property is quote unquote "bettered" by the application of this bylaw, that it should come with some kind of a condition that the home may not be demolished except for the usual case of emergency, you know, destruction by fire, natural causes. There should be something that protects this house if it receives this kind of benefit.
I don't think we have a problem with that.
We don't.
No.
We don't.
Other comments?
I'm a big fan of Water Fresh Farm. The way you're producing agricultural products there is the way to go for the future. It's a particularly social and commercial project. It's really, really a good addition to the town. I agree with Ken and Fran and Claire, though, that if we're saying this is a historical farmhouse, then that would cover the external view of the building. But I want to say that you have a lot of land there, you just don't have a frontage. And I don't see a way around the fact if someone other than you lived in a home, they would buy it knowing there's a business there and they would buy it knowing there's a lot of traffic, you could just go into the business and farming going on so that they didn't have to, that's part of, pardon, parcel of it. But if someone else buys that property and they would have to maintain it historically, they wouldn't have the frontage for a driveway. And that's, to me, is the core issue that we're looking at. Because when I was on the Conservation Commission, we were reviewing this and the Planning Board reviewing this, it's a project as a whole and including your home and your future business, which is now great and thriving. But I don't see a way around the frontage question, unless you guys can address that.
That seems to be what the bylaw is meant to do. The, we left 150 feet of frontage for the marketplace. That leaves us with 129.9, 121, I'm sorry, .92. And there is going to be some, there are going to be some easements which allow market traffic to go just where it goes right now and to allow the driveway to the house to be used exactly as it is now. Nothing's going to change. So it's not getting around the frontage requirement, Frank. The reason that the dimensionally rules are allowed to be bent is to preserve an historic structure. So I guess what I'm saying to the Commission, and having heard us answer this, is that we would be amenable to having a condition or whatever the board wants to craft to make sure that this is preserved, this is a historical structure, at least the exterior.
I think brings up an interesting point that I'm trying to search my memory bank for. On the house lot, did we create, when we did site plan review for the farm stand, was any of the parking for the farm stand on what will be now a separate lot?
No. No. Here's the existing driveway, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Because we had some follow, or parking that wasn't going to be built or something in the plan. I just vaguely remember we had some discussions.
It was, it's not on this lot.
Okay.
But so to Frank's point, is the, is the access to this house now going to be over the farm land or does it have its own, will it have its own access drive on its own lot? You're saying that this easement needs, you're going to depend on going over the lot?
You'll still go in the entrance, it's a one-way U-turn, you'll still go in the entrance and park over on the lot, in the existing parking spaces.
So the house will, in order to access the house, you will have to go over the Water Fresh Farm land? It will not have access of its own?
Well, it could.
It could. I would submit there are many homes on Hayden Row Street that have 90 feet of frontage as we sit here today.
But there's no drive that's going to go off of your lot?
Well, it's just the way that, the way the drive is configured, part of the driveway out is on the lot. So theoretically, they could sneak in this side and just, but to keep the traffic flow safe, Claire.
Oh, I understand that. But, you know, you're claiming to create a lot that will be separate from the operation. So it's a logical question to then ask, if further down the road, those are owned by different people, is this house going to be able to have access without the benefit of the next door neighbor who owns the rest of the land?
Absolutely. Easements have to accompany that and they're referenced in this plan.
Just, could you show where the driveway is on, and the, where the lot line is?
Sure.
It may, hey, that. Sorry, if I can see it.
This dark line is the lot.
Okay.
The exit driveway is here and here.
Okay.
It's down here.
So where the driveway...
You could get access.
Where the driveway hits Hayden Row almost at entire width is on the house.
Yes.
Property. Okay.
So you're saying that Water Fresh Farms driveway will be on the house's property?
Yes. Part of it. A little part of it.
The house is going to have to give an easement to Water Fresh Farms?
Exactly. That's correct. Both ways.
Why don't I suggest this? And I know where we are, we're starting to get a little bit behind, but we've got time to make it up today. I think we're to the point where if we're going to craft some historic preservation language, it's best not to be done tonight, but be done elsewhere. And I'd also like people to look at the site plan review to make sure we didn't do something that, in that, that would screw this thing up. And I apologize, I didn't think about that question until basically Frank kind of asked it. So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, would that require us to request a withdrawal of the application?
No. We'll hear it at our next meeting.
When is your next meeting?
May 9.
What?
May 9.
May 9?
It's...
May 9?
We didn't give you that A and R plan back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't talk to you yet.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
He handed us an A and R plan, so before the clock starts, we'll get it back to him.
Got you.
To make sure. Your hands can fly. Instead of, I know, and you know, it not been planned.
Right. He brought it tonight to start the clock, but well, before the clock starts, we didn't stamp it in yet, we'll get it right back to him.
Yeah. And just to be clear, all the parking that was approved is inside of the stoplight line over here. There's parking to the house over here.
Yep.
For the business, it's, the drive is here, the parking is inside of that line.
Okay.
Okay? On both sides.
Okay.
I know one time we talked about some parking on this side of the road as well, from the property land, but we never constructed that.
Yep.
Okay? And then we also expanded, I think the expansion you're thinking about, Ken, is this was gravelled, this was kept undeveloped. The future expansion of parking is right here on both sides.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm just not well to remember.
Yes.
The details. I'm sorry.
No, it's been, it's been four years. I wouldn't expect you to.
You should have kept a little bit more land when you sold it to the town in the back. You almost created yourself a hardship. But it sounds like you're going to squeak it in, I guess.
So May 9, we have Ash, 25th of Ash at 7:30. How long do you want some of it?
Let's do it at eight with the possibility that they might go a little bit longer. We'll make sure we have enough time to handle both, but I just don't want to be sitting for a while if, if Ash, that one could go really fast or really slow depending on what's going on with that one. So look for a motion to continue this public hearing until eight o'clock on May 9.
So move to second.
Move to second for the discussion. Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Joanne, you're up next.
So maybe, Doug, she's got your check in there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Sure. Good evening.
Yeah.
Jennifer Chubb. Oh, hi. Nice to meet you. Yes, likewise.
Okay. I think you've got some samples for us today, is what I've heard.
I do, so good evening.
Hey, introduce yourself. I do, you've been here before.
Yes.
Dwayne Boyce.
I'm a project manager of yours.
Sure.
So I just wanted to re-familiarize the board with the area that we're talking about. So the samples that we're talking about are for this area right here, which is supposed to cover the new equipment at the front of the station on South Street. So I just wanted to kind of give a visual...
I think everybody, this is our South Street station, electrical station? Okay.
I think everyone's familiar with it.
Yep. Yep. So these are, so right now we have pretty much three samples, three different colors. So these are, so right now we have pretty much three samples, three different colors, color choices. Put that one here, and this one here. So, we know that over the course of the discussions, you know, the visual impact of this project has been a source of much discussion with the board. So we saw it fit to bring it before you and, you know, get your input as far as the samples that you would like to see for the wall, proposed wall at the front.
What is the wall made out of?
It's a, it's basically wood shavings that are chemically bonded with cement. I have the literature on that, if you're interested.
So, which-
This is all going to be stone, correct?
Yes, this will be, this will be that material. Currently, the existing, the existing finishes matches closer to this one right here, this sample right here, but, you know, we decided to bring a couple of additional options.
Well, Claire, you're a static design review board.
I thought Jeff was going to be here, but-
Yeah. I know, I watched the tape, he said someone other than his wife actually-
I know.
I'm not allowed to pick out colors at my house, so.
Maybe we should slide this down.
So those are all sound-absorbing things, and you said the one on the right is pretty similar to the color that's already there?
Correct.
So, how close is it? I mean, if you, if you picked that one-
Yep.
Is it going to match it, or is it going to be just off enough that it's going to look really weird?
No, it's going to, it's going to-
Exact match?
It's going to match it. Well, because from my understanding, it's the same manufacturer, so we'll have them come out and match it.
It's kind of close, but not quite. It looks worse, and we're just trying to do something-
Sure, understood.
Completely different. Do you know how they hold up to the sun and discoloration? Would that, would that darker one be liable to fade, or, you know, whether it would just be safer with the lighter color that isn't going to fade out in the sun and look the way?
From the, from the literature that I've read, and from, you know, stuff that's on there, it seems to hold out very well in the sunlight.
Is this the material that's on there now?
This is, yeah, this is some of it.
And how long does that last for? What's the lifespan?
Um, it's, it's, I don't know the exact lifespan, it's in excess of 30 years, so.
So you don't paint that very often?
No, because it's anti-mold resistant.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's, you know, it's not subject to the elements.
I'm going to stay out of it, because I'm not allowed to pick colors.
Can I just ask, where on that building that you show there are the existing panels that are that light color, and where would the new ones go?
So the, the existing building is this-
The top band.
This top band right here, and if you-
Up there at the top, yeah.
So the existing building is, is this built, this big structure back there?
The whole building is there.
The whole thing is already that color.
Right, and then we have this small section here that's added.
I see. So it's going to be, there's a separation between them?
Correct.
And, and it still gets the fence where they connect?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So it's just a front wall to the same building?
Well, I mean, my feeling would be that you'd make sense to go with what you've already got, if there's, if there's enough of a separation between them, that, you know, the, it's not going to show if there's a slight variation, unless it's way off.
And I believe you guys committed to these plantings up in front of it, too.
That's, that's correct.
Which hopefully is, that's the biggest thing that, we're more excited about the plantings than the walls.
I don't know. You think it's stupid what they got?
I think so, it makes no sense, yeah. Sounds like you got a consensus on your color.
Yeah, I agree. Whatever you do, don't put that top one with that one.
No, it's stupid.
Oh.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd say if you can't, if you can't get a good match, then you'd be better to go with the darker one front, so that there's that clear contrast, rather than the kind of sort of, but not quite.
Yep, sure.
Okay. You've got a minute, you can take on another little matter today?
Hope so.
These are pictures from Mr. McDowell, Legacy Farms. The first, first one is the pole that's now in the middle of 85. And Verizon has set months and months and months and months ago-
Okay.
The pole that you barely see off the picture, actually you can see it on the second picture.
I see it, yeah.
And nobody can get from EverSource, as of yesterday, when this pole's going to get moved. Or you're wired, that's all we care about at this point. You're, you're, you're next up. And quite frankly, the guy that takes all the work orders, from what I hear from Mr. McDowell, he acknowledges he has a work order, but he won't give them any answer at all as to when he wants to schedule it. And we're trying to pave and put a lane that's going to go right into the, right through that pole. We're obviously more than a little bit concerned about this pole, as you can see how it's been But it's really frustrating that we can't even get an answer as to when it might be done.
Understood. If I could get back to you before Friday of this week, but hopefully tomorrow.
Okay.
I hope to get an answer on the proposed date of when we'll transfer.
Okay, then, that's, that's the first pole.
Okay.
Then the next three pictures, the last three pictures in there, are pictures of the pole that's in the middle of Franklin Road, which is Legacy North. Now, that one, I think you got paid for the work order for that sometime in August.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe it is now almost the end of April.
Good news on that one.
That one, yeah?
Yeah, good news on that one. I took similar pictures, and Dwayne, you want to give the update?
Sure, so there was a response from the manager of the South Door area, which is responsible for this area, saying that, that, that it'll be scheduled to be transferred this week, if not. He reached out to his supervisor to make it priority to have it installed by the end of next week.
I think it's weather permitting, to be honest with you, this week.
Okay, that's good news.
I'll follow up with both of those.
Now, the sad part about it is, you can see the pictures, but the next three poles down the line have got white arrows pointed to them, because they have to get higher, because you're upgrading the service to Legacy Farms Road North. You know, it goes underground through that whole process. Unfortunately, on those three poles, Verizon hasn't set the replacement pole, which, and I think they're still on strike, I think. So that one kind of is holding up the works.
Unfortunately, unless something was imminent danger, we're going to basically wait till Verizon workers come back, unless Verizon, current crew or management, whoever is setting poles, can do something. So, we can put a request in, I just don't believe that that will take a priority, but I can't really speak on Verizon, or Verizon.
Yeah, well, if you can get this one that's out of the, the wire's transferred out of the line, I mean, that'll at least get the first one, then Verizon can maybe, whenever they get the wire, their wires out, but obviously right now, they're, they're pointing a finger at you guys.
Okay.
Now, we have been really frustrated, and this isn't the first time I think you've heard it from the board, about the inability of both utilities to move poles out of the right of way. In the school street, West Main Street intersection took the better part of a year, I think, to move the poles. It costs the town a lot of money. This is, you know, the town is, and, and with the developer's support, is doing Legacy Farms Road North. And, you know, it's costing us money, just, you know, to put stuff in there. And the amount of time and energy Mr. McDowell has spent, and even this board, in just hearing about it, is just very frustrating. I talked to Representative Dykema about potentially filing legislation next year that puts a time limit on the utilities for transferring poles. And when I first brought up the pole issue with Representative Dykema, she says, "Are you worried about double poles?" I says, "Double poles? I can live with double poles." I mean, I don't like to look at double poles, but I'm just worried about getting the new ones in so that we can serve customers. And, you know, it's, I mean, it took, it took the better part of six months to get the conduit fed on Legacy South. They, you know, they were doing all the apartment complex building, they had them all drywalled and painted with generators on each one. I just don't understand that business philosophy of where you're not worried about new customers. I know you're a monopoly, but you've got to do some customer service.
I think we're in a disadvantage, because sometimes, and many times, there's a story behind, you know, just a certain pole, in the sense that, you know, this one seems to be pretty clear, it's just one transfer. When you look at Franklin and you see, you know, the number of poles, and then other poles setting, I'm, I'm going to, you know, guess that most of the decision could be, and this isn't, you know, definite, but it could be that, you know, they wanted just to get the crews, because this is probably at least two crew to do the number of work, two trucks, and, you know, working side by side, maybe even three or four, but should just keep them kind of going from pole to pole, you know, so basically, you're doing the job once, you're getting the police details, you're getting all of the crews, you know, designated for one spot to do the necessary work now. And then sometimes-
But I even buy all that. I'm, I'm project manager by training.
Yeah.
That's how I'd organize a thing. But I wouldn't make my customer wait eight months.
Well, you know, sometimes when the request comes in, you know, Verizon will, you know, start, start the work, and, you know, maybe we have other work to be done, so we're not ready to really go in. I mean, you know, there's, I know the West Main Street School, there were some situations that it was a communication, there was, there was, there was work on equipment that had to be done before we could just do a simple transfer. And, you know, sometimes, I mean, you know, in these cases here, well, sometimes they're not simple transfers, when you have a pole that is with the wires going up the side, they call it a standpipe, and it requires underground crews as well of overhead, so it's really just getting the crew availability. But with that said, I certainly think you've been waiting for these, and it's understood, and we've communicated that.
And last, last winter, we waited for, just down the road there, at Legacy Farms and East Main Street, with the pole right in the middle of there, and there was two poles that had to be lengthened, so that we could, Mr. McDowell could do the roadwork on that. I mean, it's-
What's the average length, Dwayne, Mr. Chairman? What's the average length of wait time for a work order like this to go through? Is this typical, are we, typical, or is this atypical? Because eight months, or whatever it is.
It's, it's typical, from what I'm hearing, other communities. I think it was Representative Dykema said it was subject to some, some legislative hearings, and there's supposedly a report. I haven't followed up with her this week to, to get that report, but I will.
What we do in many communities, and certainly, you know, are working better towards it, is the pre-construction. So, when you have roadway, a road widening project, or whatever it might be that would require it, you know, many times we're at meetings, but Verizon's not there, and of course Verizon is responsible to set the poles. And so we're, you know, working to getting all the right folks in on it, you know, at a pre-construction. And we've seen many communities, and it's been very favorable. So, we get a three-year plan, maybe even a five-year plan, and we're working with the gas and the electric folks to coordinate the projects, and the towns are maybe tweaking what they need, and we're tweaking what we need, so that this situation isn't happening. And, you know, so we just, there's a gas pre-construction meeting tomorrow, and on the electric side, we don't have anything major planned, but it's these kind of things that require our attention, just to get the other parties to move on their wires as well. So, we'll take these back, and I certainly understand, and it's been heard and shared internally, but, you know, I don't blame you for bringing that up.
Okay. Well, we look forward to, your new friend Jennifer here will be happy to take the answer and distribute it to the rest of us on that. And, you know, we, you know, a lot of this is work our developers doing, but we, you know, this fall, we had a couple where, you know, Guy couldn't, you know, couldn't get his underground wires to the building, or on Lumber Street, you know, it was delayed. And, you know, it's just, no.
Questioning.
It's very frustrating. Yeah, it's a good word. Okay. Thank you.
One more comment, or I guess maybe one more question. For our television audience, can you, you covered it a little bit, but can you describe who owns the poles, the process, like, are you saying Verizon owns the poles, and then they manage where they go, and when they go, and then you work with them, and cable company works with them? Who drives it?
There's, there's an agreement. So, many of the poles will be jointly owned, and there's an agreement that Verizon will set the poles here in the town of Hockington. And when the pole is stripped of all the wires and equipment, and Guy wires, they would return and remove the old pole. And so, when the town is starting a project, it's key that not just EverSource is in the room to hear about the project, but Verizon, because Verizon is going to start the work order. And so, once the work order is established, there's a communication piece that comes over to EverSource. And this would be, you know, for, for all projects. And once we get that piece of information, there has to be a sign-off or something on that nature, and then the work order will begin. Once the pole is set, our goal is to do the wire transfers in a reasonable fashion. And, you know, again, sometimes I will say, there's stories that I'm not privy to of the field conditions, and I think that might be the case with Legacy Farms, but I don't have confirmation of that. But if I had the right, appropriate folks here today, they might explain some of these situations. But this length of time, it does seem to be extensive.
I have a follow-up question to the project manager.
Oh, go ahead.
You mentioned you spoke to the manager of the South Door area of EverSource, or Verizon?
EverSource.
And then he said that this should be resolved within-
Next, next week.
And then, but possibly with Verizon being on strike, it could be an issue.
Well, I think those poles are already set.
The poles are set, but, 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 no, they'll transfer the wires, and then they top the pole, then it's Verizon who's probably next on the pole, they'll have to do their work, and then usually the cable guy, and then it goes back to Verizon to pull off the pole.
But I think what was shared is that on the Franklin Street, there are some additional poles that need to be set, and those would be set by Verizon, so we'd wait for Verizon to set those poles.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome aboard, Jennifer.
Okay, you can have. I think we're ready for DPW Garage.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hello? John?
For Jennifer.
Yes, he is.
Oh, okay. Where are we on voting members today, for this one?
I believe everyone, just to see if we can vote, because John signed, he, he watched the meeting and signed, so I believe we're all set.
Okay. And we only need five votes for a site plan review, and we have seven members.
Six.
Six. Six. So, so you can, so you can make one of us mad. Hopefully not.
It's our home, Mr. Chairman, and we're going to address everyone's questions.
I understand. And then, after we get done with this, we cancel out the pollty folks tonight. So you've got to a reasonable time, but I want, we want to talk about sidewalks.
Excellent.
Maximize your ability, John.
Beautiful. Thank you. The EverSource folks might have grabbed Dan.
Oh, really? Well.
Mr. Chairman, you say you're canceling Legacy Farms?
Mr. Chairman, can you say you're canceling Legacy Farms?
Yes. We've basically run out of voting members until after the election. So we'll kind of restart the legacy process.
All right.
And the goal is to do it in a expedited, abbreviated, until the new members get comfortable with where we're at. I was also not too pleased with them today of submitting revised plans today and to discuss at tonight. I mean, that, you know, that is not courteous to the board. But it's primarily we're, we ran out of, we're about to run out of members. So we'll deal with that. We'll meet about... You know, if we, well, let's hopefully get through this tonight. That's my goal.
Mr. Chairman, the chairman of the PBC, Dan McIntyre, is double booked. He's at a meeting with the conservation division. He'll be in here in about 10 minutes, but we're certainly ready with our engineers and architect.
Okay, great. Okay. So let's open the continued public hearing for 83 Wood Street Site Plan Review, Town of Hopkinton, new DPW facility. So hearing is open. Why don't you start off with talking about the plan changes from the last time? There might have been a few minor changes, for sure, sidewalk and whatever else kind of got updated in the plans between now and the last meeting.
Okay. And I know it's likely difficult for some of the back to see, but I'll just generally discuss. As we talked about in the last meeting, one of the main focuses was trying to get sidewalks on Wood Street. And so what we have shown in the plans that we're submitting here packages, sidewalks beginning at this entry point here, running this length as requested, and also extending to this limit of the property as requested. So we were able to get those and put into the plan. I think everything worked. We actually met with Design Review Board and also found out to them and ultimately received their approval through that process.
And any other significant changes to the plan?
Significant changes? No, there was several clarifications that were requested in infinite review. Much of that had to do with detailing and confirming capacities of roof grain, and all of those were incorporated into the detail sheets. I can go through those.
I think if the engineers are happy, let's kind of leave those alone if everyone is all set with that. Okay. So I think we're back to going through the outline and just basically trying to make sure we've got everything covered, and then we'll go through design review comments and a few things like that, and then we'll see where we're at. Okay. I think we left off on stormwater management, and I believe, given with Beta's letter, you guys are happy with stormwater.
We made a few comments at the last round, and they've sufficiently addressed everything we had requested, so.
Any comments or questions on stormwater from members of the board or anyone from the public, which I know, yeah.
I'm a hybrid.
Yeah. Okay. Is everyone consensus that they've met stormwater, particularly because they're under conservation, I guess restrictions also too, so. Okay. Parking lot design. I think when we've asked, left that, we determined it had enough spots. I think that was somewhere I've read. And so we have enough spots. Everything has been able to turn and get in and out of it. Other questions from members of the board on parking lot design?
I suppose I appreciate the changes that the main, looks good.
Thank you.
Question, can you just refresh me? Did you have any excess spaces in the number or just enough?
I believe it was one extra space.
Oh, okay, it's any one, okay.
How many spaces total?
If I recall, I think it's 39. It was designed, and the design standard was 38. What was it, 39 or 40?
It's gonna be, it's gonna have more than the occupancy, but based on the design standard, it shows one.
It's gonna have more value in-
One more.
Yeah, correct. That's what I was gonna get to, Mr. Chairman. At maximum capacity of the workforce, it will be less than 30 employees. So there's ample room there for the public that comes in for permitting and questions.
So how many workers, employees do you think usually are parking there?
It will be around 27, 28.
Oh, okay.
Most guys drive their own truck.
But they do. But we don't typically have all 28 there at once with vacation time and sick time and personal time.
The reason I ask is, and I'm gonna keep going back, is I'm still harking on that salt, rather than salt, sand thing and trying to find a place. And I was just wondering if these, these four spaces over here to the side, that they're right in front of where the trucks come out, is a kind of a area that you might put a bin or something instead of all the parking and have some way that people could, anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to think creatively where you're gonna put that on this site, because the whole salt issue, the ashes could probably go down at Fruit Street or something, but the salt issue, even if you did Irving to Darryl, I think there may be some wetlands down there that they might worry about the salt.
Through the chairman, for the benefit of the rest of the members of the planning board, when we were at the Design Review Board, we talked about the salt and sand pile. Where we have it now, it's very dangerous during our winter operations. We've had many near misses where we're backing out with a loader, limited visibility, and cars are just coming in, nonchalantly, not aware of the, all the activities that are there. And here, we've got all of that concentrated onto the site. And we really prefer not to have the public coming in there. Plus, at night, it's gonna be gated. So there's really no access for folks after hours. We are committed to continuing providing that to the residents, just not sure that this is the location where it will end up.
A comment about that. We did talk about this last time here, too. I think this is an improvement over the way it is now, and my only concern was the gatedness of it. And I was thinking, maybe can you put like an extra big barrel of sand for when it is after hours for emergency use? Because there have been times where we needed it, you know, and then let's go get some sand quick and come back and, you know, someone's stocking, and it's kind of important.
It's definitely important, and I know it's something that the residents have come to expect and to need. So we're committed to providing that, but this may not be the site for it. We're looking at our options perhaps over on Fruit Street, outside of the impacts to drinking water wells. I know that the committee that is looking at the Irvine to Darryl property is looking at perhaps setting aside some land for DPW use.
At least several locations.
Yeah. So we're looking at our options. Again, here, I don't see that this is gonna be the best place for the public to be accessing during storms.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I don't want that to be forgotten, because it is something that's important to the residents. Is it possible to condition that where it's not relative to this particular site, that it be provided or that, I mean, that would be off-site, so maybe you can't put it on there? I just want to make sure that doesn't get swept aside.
Well, hopefully, some future selectmen will keep her-
Sand.
Her stuff.
Stuff gets forgotten.
I want to reiterate that again, and maybe state this in a better manner. One of the main reasons I ever go to this location is to get sand or salt in an emergency, which I've done, and a lot of my neighbors have. And when I was growing up in the 70s, we'd have the buckets out, the yellow post around them, and then DPW would go around, fill them up every weekend in case there was a storm. That's pretty expensive. But getting to a location like this makes more sense. It's easy for DPW to handle, because you've kind of taken away access to something we have right now, and you're getting a great new building, and it's like, it's easy to put a couple buckets of sand out, and just in case of an emergency here and in other locations around town, that's a critical need for people that maybe don't pay much attention to what's going on in the town, and this is our tax money. We'd like to have some of that still available to us.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I don't want us to get caught on the fact of the DPW providing sand and salt. We're committed to continue to provide that. If we can put it here somewhere out in the front safely, where it's not gonna be an impact, we will absolutely look at that, as well as other locations across town. Mind you, now, in the 70s, it was different. You could put out a couple barrels. Now, the pile goes during a storm. People pull up with their pickup truck, they load that. And so it is a need, and we're committed to continuing.
And this will save the town money from people doing that.
Okay. Let's, we've actually, I think we've got a consensus, and we're done with parking lot and...
Dave Paul says, middle on drive, just a question about the, John, you mentioned visitor parking. Will that be labeled with signage or?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, yes, that will be labeled.
And primarily, it's just people coming in for permits. You don't have meeting space that you would normally have?
I think that the training, excuse me, the kitchen break room slash training room is expected to be used as a public meeting space, but not during normal hours. So that entire parking lot and its, how many spaces?
Forty-two.
Forty-two spaces will be there.
So we could have a planning board meeting there if we so scheduled it?
Love to have you. We have to get through this process first.
We already got dibs on the library meeting. Okay. Let's see. I think we're into lighting. I think there was a lighting plan here, and I think you were in reasonable amount of lighting. And they also put together a condition with lighting that says you turn it off. I think is the condition, except for when there's a storm or an emergency.
Right, by 7:00 p.m. I think it works.
I think it was one hour after you closed the facility, if I remember.
Oh, yeah, one hour following close a building to the public, and no case shall be on after 11:00 p.m., except for the case of an emergency or storm event.
Which I think is pretty bright, the right type of the exemption.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So parking lot, it's kind of the bright spots.
And so this just gives you a sense of where the lighting is, and what we provided is lighting into the site for the parking area, and then also around the perimeter where you have the main yard operations with pole lights, David, we're 15 feet?
Yes.
15-foot pole?
Yep.
Building mounted lights around portions of the perimeter at 12 feet, per the requirements of the town. No spillage off of the site.
Questions about lighting anymore?
Yeah, also have, we do have entry canopies into the building at three locations. Those will have smaller, undermounted lights that are big to emergency power.
Sure.
And how does that compare with what is there today in terms of illumination?
I think it's primarily wall-mounted lights that-
Blast everywhere.
Yeah, blast everywhere. These are all cut-off fixtures, house shields on the front portion, so you don't have direct view into the fixtures.
Just comment from the designer queue, you are gonna use those diffusers over the wall packs that we talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And just for the board, I know there is a prohibition against uplighting, but we did ask for a very small amount of lighting underneath the DPW sign at the overhang.
Correct.
But I noticed it says that we can, it may be allowed by special permit, so I guess we'll allow that.
Uh, that's really considered uplighting.
Yeah.
Tiny light, just a long distance.
Let's agree that that's not what we were talking about.
Just confirming you're gonna do that, that those diffusers are very well loaded.
Okay. Do we have a consensus about everyone that we should go on beyond lighting? I guess I see no reason why we keep talking about that. Let's check that off. How about building and screening? I think that might have been more design review type comments, but go ahead.
On the, what's the one we're on now? I'm sorry?
Building and screening.
Oh, building and screening. So, yes, we've gone through the Design Review Board, and we've provided a landscaping plan to improve the overall aesthetics on the front of the building. And one of the items that we had originally in the plan is a fence around the generator enclosure area, and at the recommendation of the Design Review Board, we're gonna be changing that out to just plantings, so you don't have, basically, an ugly fence in the front of the building. So that was one of the conditions, recommendations from the Design Review Board.
Okay. What do the plans show tonight? Fence or?
The fence.
The fence, correct.
Okay. So we'll figure out a condition for that one.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I think that the Design Review Board's recommendation of planting is also gonna help us with site distance, because right beside where that generator is is the main exit point of the garage. And if you've got that, big trucks coming out and the public merging at that point right there, we wouldn't want a stockade fence that would block that view, so that the plantings will provide better safety and visibility.
Where does the generator location?
The generator stays there. It's just that it's no longer gonna have a fence around it. It's gonna have plantings.
And natural screening.
This is, this is a separate generator than from the generators in front of the pump station.
Correct.
Okay. Unfortunately, you couldn't size one to do both, huh?
The engineers are gonna look at whether or not there is any capacity within that generator to help downsize, but no, we didn't.
Claire?
Yeah. Not to be a whiner in here, but I know after Design Review, it mentions that there's a, they require 50-foot vegetated buffer along the westerly side. It should be waived because it's a dense wooded area. And then I went by there the other day, and that house directly to the west, it's all deciduous and vines. And in this time, at this time of the year, now granted, what they're gonna be seeing now is a huge improvement over what's there now. And you're not gonna have much activity going on on that side of the building. There's no lighting. But it doesn't have a screening. I thought it did. It's really not dense wooded at all. You can see straight through. The only problem is, I looked in that, along the property line, there's sort of like a gully with a little creek or something running through there, so I don't know. I mean, I'd really like to see some amount of evergreen screening for those neighbors, because you can see right through, but I'm not sure where you put it.
I think we talked about that, and you'd be going into the wetlands to try to plant it, which is not-
Yeah, it's a bucky little swamp thing.
Yeah, their butters were here for the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe they indicated one of the benefits in our discussion with them was that right now, they see right into the yard, and what you'll have here is that you'll be shielding all the yard operations. So in trying to plant in that area, in that wetland area, it's not viable, wouldn't be, would be more of an issue with conservation, because we'd have to disturb that area. So I think the building really is intended, and that was the purpose of this layout, to shield that operation that they currently see. They won't see it, nor will they hear it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
But we should probably keep something in place in case it doesn't turn out as the way you expect it, and if there's an issue going forward, at least have the availability of some money to some plantings down the-.
I don't think you could get in there after the building's built. Maybe do it by hand.
Oh, yes, I was assuming. And don't put your tractor in back there.
I don't know, I just think that's hard. And then you also got Concon. I mean, that's all subject to ConCon. You're not gonna be allowed to plant anything in there, I don't think.
I guess the only option would be if you wanted to plant something on the acres line. If they wanted, if they wanted a few, a few arbiter or something put in on their property to shield it, but they seemed to be okay with it.
They didn't, they didn't, they didn't say anything at the last meeting.
Right, right.
And how high is the building gonna be on that side of the hill? Did we talk about that?
We talked about-
Twenty-three feet, twenty. Yeah. There's a trade-off, because you don't really hear it then. You don't see, you don't hear it, but you're looking at a big wall that's 23 feet tall.
Yeah, and when, in the elevators, we showed how we're gonna break up that massing, and then we'll be back to the Design Review Board when we get chalk drawings in select colors, so they can be, be able- colors, so they can be, the builders can be notified at that time as well.
Make it pretty like the Mass Highway building's gonna be.
It's a facade.
I'm just kidding. We, we done with building and screening? Okay. Utilities, I believe everything's underground?
Yes.
And you know who to apply for, for water and sewer permits? Yeah. David?
Hi, Dave Paul. Um, just a question, I noticed that the wires coming across today, across the street, there's like three or four sets, different sets of them, different poles. Is that gonna be like, do you, is it consolidated at all, or?
Yeah, we are consolidating, and we bring it in across, underground.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, so we don't have the wires across the street.
Excellent, thank you.
The one going for the sewer pump station stays on that brand-new pole?
Correct. But that's on the north westerly corner.
Where, where did that pole end up? John?
Where did which pole?
The, the, the one by the pump station.
They basically put a new one right beside the existing one.
Which is, kind of shows where on the plan, kinda. It's kinda right, kinda behind the building, or, well, right in the front there.
Yeah.
Okay. Did, did that all get done?
Yes.
Finally.
Finally, about a week ago.
Really? Would've added that to, this is a very, uh, but we already had enough to talk about what there... Okay. Any other questions on utilities? Construction management plan, I didn't see one. I'm not sure we need one, per se, for this, because, particularly because it's a town-owned position, or plant. What's, what is your plant? You're gonna move everything off-site?
Correct.
To Fruit Street?
Correct. I've already met with Elaine, Elaine Lazarus, and Chuck Cadlec. There are no special permits required for that. The only thing required is for permits for the temporary trailers that we're moving in for the office space, and for the, the, for the men for their lunch and break rooms.
Are you moving, you're moving your temporary buildings over there, too? Your shelters or not?
Interestingly enough, Mr. Chairman, it costs more to move those than it does to buy new. So, we are looking at our options as far as, as those buildings.
That, 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 I can't, I have a hard time believing. Even all the cement pile, well, you know, you've got a lot of cement stuff, too.
We push back, it costs literally more to, to take those down and reassemble them at a different location than to buy a new one, two new ones, and put them over there.
But, but you still gotta take these down.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. So, we're, uh, we're looking at our options. We're going to need sand and salt storage, so we're likely going to put that out through the procurement process to find land to lease. Uh, we may use those, those temporary buildings, those, we'll call them tents, um, for sand and salt storage at, at that location.
Yeah, you're not gonna do sand and salt at Fruit Street, I would hope.
No.
All right, hope not, let me work that one.
Well, there's a quarry area.
No, you cannot, it, there was, there was a problem in the nineties when Pine was doing that, and, and quite frankly, the well was contaminated for about ten years until the water flushed it out, and it's now, no for that.
That's why we understand that we have to go through the procurement process to lease land.
Yeah, okay. Or the Tadaro Irvine property.
Mm-hmm. That's a good point. What's the construction period for the school? Will they have their access road in for winter?
I don't know. I don't know. If not, an access road might be a small part of the, you know...
That's an excellent point.
Anyway, I'm just, whatever.
No, that's an excellent point.
Might, might save you a buck or two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything other questions, construction manager? Okay. Emergency generator, we were talking about, both your screening on yours and the screening on the, on the one for the DP, or the sewer pump station. Uh, does that have some screening trees around that or something, or is that in our other condition?
Mr. Chairman, when we came in for the sewer pump station, there was a site plan, special permit that was issued at that time, and it did require screening in front of that larger generator for the pump station, so we're committed to putting up screening in front of that. And as you heard earlier, the generator for this building will have plantings to be requested by the design review.
And you make it clear that approval of this plan does not relieve of that requirement?
Understood.
Understood. Okay. Anyone else ready about screening?
Hey, Dad, come in.
We're, we're just about ready to get this thing done tonight, so, so don't say much.
I won't.
We already worked, negotiated a shared parking agreement, we're all set.
We're holding our meetings there when it's...
Yeah. Let's see. Uh, solar panels, I think that was Frank's issue, and I thought we kinda had an answer at one point, but why don't we repeat it, because I forgot?
Yeah, so, um, with this facility, what we do is we build in the additional loading so that at any time in the future, the building can be equipped with solar panels. It's a standing seam metal roof, so they just clip right to the metal roof, so the building is set up, so if, anytime that that becomes a cost effect or alternative, the, the town can install that.
And we have quotes and stuff like that, mind up for any solar panels, or?
No, that wasn't anticipated as part of this construction project, uh, but if grants come available for, for adding solar panels, that will reduce our long-term electrical costs, we'll certainly look at that.
All right. I would say a little bit about that. Um, you know, our electrical bills for townwide, we pay like a million dollars a year, something close to that, and, um, the solar panels, we have them at police, fire, and schools, perform pretty well. Um, and, uh, we don't own those, we lease them, and we get the benefit of having power generated. Um, when we, uh, town meeting approved the plan for a solar project field, um, on Fruit Street, uh, that plan was, uh, couldn't happen ever so, it's infrastructure issues, um, but the sizing of it was, uh, designed to alleviate most electrical power that the town needs, so we could generate on, was it eight acres, a million dollars' worth of electricity a year. Um, the roof of, of a brand-new building in 2016 should be designed in mind for solar panels, and we should be putting solar panels up that we own to get the most benefit. Uh, I own my solar panels, and, uh, I save about at least a third of my electricity in the winter, and two-thirds in the summer. Uh, I think that this building is replacing an older building that's not meeting our needs, and if we're gonna build a new building, we should build it with an eye to the future and incorporate solar panels now at the beginning stage, where it's the least expensive. It's, uh, there's, it's just the cost of the panels and the installation of them, uh, and everything else is, uh, free money. Uh, the sun shines on this building in twenty-three feet in the air, are there any trees around it that would block the sun? And, uh, it will go a long way to help alleviate the power that you're using, because you'll be using a lot more power in this building, it's doing a lot more things than the previous building, uh, has, and, um, it's just the most cost-efficient way to move forward, even though it's more of an outlay at the beginning. Uh, but it's cheaper to do at the beginning stages of, of construction than it is to retrofit something after the fact, even though you guys planned ahead for it. Um, but now's the time to, to do it for the greatest benefit. Uh, and that's my suggestion, and I'd, I'd like to see you guys get quotes for something at least, because, um, that's a responsible thing to do in this day and age, and I'd like to ask that you guys do that.
Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with everything that you've said. Uh, we have, um, when we put together the cost estimate, which we went to town meeting for and received approval for, didn't include solar panels. We can certainly look at what the solar panels, excuse me, solar panels would cost, and have that, that cost available, but I suspect that that's gonna bust our budget on the building itself. Uh, that's why I suggested that we would look at if there are any loans or grants out there.
Right, which is, which is always good. Um, but I'm asking this in light of library project, need to parking, that we might need overflow parking four times a year, paying sixteen thousand dollars a month, and where's that money?
No, no, we're not. We're at sixteen thousand a year.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, solar, solar panels are roughly a thousand dollars per panel, um, to buy and have installed, round number. Um, cost less in bulk, but if we're getting, say, forty solar panels on roof of this building, uh, it's forty thousand dollars, and we'll save forty thousand dollars within four or five years, and, uh, they'll pay for themselves. Um, it's a multimillion-dollar project, and I'd like to, you know, I think forty thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars would be something that, uh, the town, would benefit the town right from day one if we do it, and that's why I like to see it looked at, and, um, yeah, numbers that work, great. Numbers that don't work, and we'll come back at it later in the future, so it's something we should look at now, and I'd like to see that done.
Uh, to share, I think, uh, I agree with the concept, but at town meeting, I specifically remember the discussion on the solar panels and the presentation that something would be looked at after the fact, and that town meeting, it was approved with the knowledge that the building was not going forward with solar panels, and that at a later date, it would be looked at.
Well, I don't know if it's precisely like that, but it is a later date now, too, and it's not a bad idea to...
But I don't, I, I go back to my, if the town has approved something at town meeting, I, I don't see it as, if, if they wanna do it and can do it within budget and it makes sense, that's fine, but I don't think we can do it as a condition, because it was not part of the approval process.
It's not one of our site standards, site, yeah, our site plan standards.
But theoretically, I agree with it.
I mean, you know, it's, the roof holds more than forty of these things, though, wouldn't it?
Um, yeah, I, I don't know the exact quantity that would fit up there, not to look at the tech panel, but we have a renewable energy group, uh, that deals with this, so we can get some pricing.
Yeah.
I think that, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and talk to them.
Yeah, well, bottom line is, the reason we, we take this process of doing the panels after the fact is, is I suspect is the same reason that your police station and your schools have it as a lease, is because the private, in, uh, private industry has more incentives, they're able to take advantage of the tax credits that you aren't able to take advantage of, so it's more advantageous to the town to lease out that roof space rather than put the panels up yourselves.
Okay.
It would be nice to have the numbers before we go there.
Yeah, we can get that.
I mean, I, I don't think that's our board, but I think you guys in, in determining what you need to do, you know, it's, it's a reasonable suggestion to, to make sure it is, but, uh, it's not...
Just a quick comment, I have thirty-two in my house, so I'm sure of all...
Yeah. Yeah. So, it, uh, yeah. Okay, anything more on solar panels?
Thank you.
Public discussion, anyone from the public have any comments on this one? Okay. Seeing none, board members? Okay, let's go through potential conditions of approval. Let's see, let's start with the site, or the, uh, the DP, or the letter from design review. We've already talked about the tube lighting, I don't think that has to be a condition. They're moving the stockade fence about emergency generator and add shrubbery, we'll figure that into a condition. What was the deal with mountain law? And is mountain law still shown on the plant?
No, it's been wanted at the, at the yard, so...
Yeah, that's subject to, um, salt spray.
Okay.
And so, it, it's not really very recommended.
Do you show it?
It wasn't shown on the plan, no.
Not shown on the plant.
But you're replacing that with some other screening.
We're, we're taking it away from the road and moving it next to the building.
Yeah, the issue was it wasn't gonna be salt tolerant, so you better put something that'll hold up.
Yeah. We've already talked about the diffuser, gable louver to the salt shed.
Yep.
That's in the plans?
Not right now, that's what we'll, uh, we'll be adding, based on what we heard from the design review board.
Let's put that as a condition. We, we're subject, we have to approve the, the plans or a condition, we're not allowed to, say, submit it later. Unfortunately, our...
That's fine.
We've gotten ourselves nailed by our Board of Appeals, and, uh, in returning the colors, we'll let design review board to deal with you guys on the colors.
This question, um, this letter from Chief Slaman seems to indicate that all the fire department's questions are either answered or dealt with, but there were a couple of things, like, there was an issue about the proximity of the salt shed to something or other, that they wanted fire-resistant materials on the salt shed, so is that gonna happen? Is that gonna change the, what the design review board saw, is it gonna change the look? Where does that stand?
Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion with the fire chief today, and he asked whether I believe that he should be here this evening?
Yeah.
And I said, based on the comments that were here, as long as he could send something that said that he was satisfied that there was no public safety issues, which he did, um, and that we would work through, a lot, a lot of the comments, for example, available water for firefighting, sprinkler protection, that's a fire flow test that will occur in the final design phase, uh, so, most of these things will be worked out with the fire chief, uh, but as far as...
Just a second. What the building materials are... If you guys are waiting for legacy farms, basically, they're, they're canceling out, so you've got an early evening.
Cancelled out.
Well, they're gonna have to resubmit, because we're, we're running out of board members. Sorry to interrupt you, John.
That's good.
Didn't want you to stick around.
Thank you.
You'll get another notice in the mail and everything, so...
I see.
After, no problem. Oh, I'm sorry, jeez.
That's our...
So, we will, uh, we will work with the fire chief to determine what the needs are there, and if they are fire resistant, if that changes the, the look of, of the building, then we'll certainly come back and give the design review.
Inside out, do we discuss possibly other town vehicles using the, uh, undercarriage washer, like fire engines and police cars and stuff like that, or, did you guys talk about that?
We, we didn't, but that facility is a town facility and certainly open to other town vehicles.
Let's see, so, let's see, through design review, I'm looking to see what other comments that we need, might need, well, let's go through page two. Um, beta letters, three remaining items, um, has this material management plans, that's, do we condition that, or is that just something that just happens?
I think that just happens.
I don't think we've ever conditioned something like that before.
I believe it's a requirement with, uh, state fire code, so it's gonna happen.
So, it's gonna happen from that aspect, regardless of what we do here tonight. Okay.
The fire chief will issue a permit.
Got it. And, no, fire review and access and security, I think we're okay with that. Um, note to match the existing roadway section for repair on Wood Street. Um, jeez, I think when you issue yourself a road opening permit, you will make sure that's covered.
Absolutely.
Uh, I'm not, uh, let's see. So, basically, we're looking for a waiver on the fifty-foot buffer, vegetated buffer, uh, and we've kinda talked about that. And then going through more site plan reviews, looking through the standards, everything complies, except for the one waiver that I just talked about. And then we're talking about conditions, and they're, they're on page five. This is site lighting that we talked about, one hour after the closing of the building to the public. Event the snow on site exceeds the amount, be accommodated safely in the snow areas, you're gonna have to move it. Uh, I think you might have the equipment to do that. And mechanical equipment will be screened, um, then we'll add something about the fence around the DPW generator, will be replaced by evergreen bushes. Dumpsters will not be emptied between eight, or only emptied, uh, between eight and five. Responsible for mitigating all construction-related impacts, including erosion, siltation, dust control in a timely manner. You'll remove your trash and debris, not bury... You'll remove your trash and debris, not bury it, and if, if, yeah. And then last one, if Director Municipal Inspections needs additional assistance, the town will pay for it. So those are the conditions, I think. Did we have a couple other ones that I missed?
I couldn't find anything in my notes that you had pointed out, but I don't know if anybody else can.
Okay, go ahead.
Discussion first.
Sure.
Before I actually say something.
Okay.
I don't want to sound picky, but I would just like to see it in black and white that we're going to have sand accessible to residents at this or other locations. If we're mentioning stuff like the dumpsters and construction-related impacts and things like that, why not put something in that we can say in black and white that, yeah, this is something we're thinking about, this is something we're aware about, this is something we care about.
Why don't, why don't we, we write quite a bit of narrative on our decisions, and we'll make sure that that's in the narrative portion, and that the applicant has agreed to continue to provide that service somewhere. Would that satisfy it? And then we can leave it fairly broad like that. It'll be in the historic record and in the site decision. We could, or we could put a condition that says if it's not provided here, they will provide it elsewhere, too.
Well, I told you on Saturday.
We could end up doing that, but if you guys would feel better comfortable with that.
And ash disposal, those are the two services to the public that are not going to happen here.
So something along the lines of keep it in mind that this is new construction, some of the purposes and reasons for the...
I would just caution the board that you're stepping into maybe dictating policy, DPW policy, to the DPW director and Board of Selectmen, and I would just caution you about that. I mean, down the road, something changes, you know, five years from now, and the town decides they don't want to do it anymore, now you have a site plan condition that they're required to do it somewhere. So I would just be careful about that.
Well, this is something that's been communicated to me. What are we going to do about sand if we need sand? Well, I'm sure we're in good hands.
Really?
But when I see stuff in here for conditions...
They all directly relate to your site plan standards.
Yeah, we don't have a standard that says that all site plans have to provide sand and ash disposal.
Well, the town services, if it being taken away.
Well, they're, they're...
They're not being taken away.
Three, Mr. Chairman, they're being relocated.
Well, oh, they are.
And we wouldn't, we wouldn't, I have no interest in removing that service to the community, and if someone down the line did have that interest, it would have to go through, I'm sure, the Board of Selectmen before they just summarily decide not to provide that service anymore.
And my bringing up is not, hopefully not being taken dictating policy, it's more, we're the planning board, and part of our elected reason is to help plan things, and just like the library or anything else, if a board member gets approached by someone who has concerns, or we have concerns of our own, and we bring them up, this is the place to do it and discuss it, and if there's traction and consensus, and that's, you know, we discuss things. So I hope no one takes it as not dictating, but some of these, you know, conditions are, you know, getting down to picking at things, and I just don't want to miss something that's more important to people that don't come to our meetings, don't read the minutes, don't understand, does there change going on? They'll see it as, oh, we're not going to be able to get sand anymore, we're not going to be able to dump our ash anymore. What do we do about it? And why did the planning board let this happen without knowing the full story, and so if it's in black and white, well, here's a condition that we're acknowledging that this may change, but we're acknowledging that it's going to be taken care of, and not just ignoring that it's changing, that it will be taken care of, and this is part of the project.
We'll put some words in the decision.
Please, it sounds like it's being overly prescriptive on what they should or should be doing, and I disagree with that. I think let them make that decision. Now, if you want to make something frank enough that says the facility has to have the ability at some point to do something like that, that's different, but in terms of whether or not they do it, I think that's totally up to them, and that's their decision to make.
Okay, let's, let's try, let's try this. On page three, the first vote that the board will take is to grant a waiver from paragraph two-ten dash one-twenty-one point one, which is buffers around non-residential uses in residential districts not to require the fifty-foot vegetated buffer along the western and southern border of lines. This waiver is justified by the fact that the project is in a previously disturbed area with dense wood areas unlikely to be disturbed immediately beyond the project So I'd look for a motion to grant that waiver.
Second.
Moving seconded for the discussion, seeing none. How do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next vote is to vote to determine that the plan complies with the site's plan standards with the following conditions. We'll put it into one vote. The conditions are basically on page five, which basically, condition one was the site plan lighting that we talked about, second is snow removal, the third one is mechanical equipment will be screened, the fourth one is a fence around the DPW will be replaced by evergreen bushes, the fifth one will be a gable end will be installed in the salt shed roof for the design review portion. Let's see, I think I'm up to six. Six is the dumpsters on the property will not be emptied unless they're between eight and five. Seven is mitigating all construction impacts. Eight is remove construction trash and debris, not burying it. The last one is the Director Municipal Inspector's, if he needs some help, you're paying for it. So I'd look for a motion to find that it meets the site plans with those conditions, and to approve the site plan with those conditions. Yeah, moved. Moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
Discussion.
Sure.
I'd like to add two conditions. First condition is that as part of this project, that barrel of sand be provided in front in a safe area, so that can, so that citizens could have access to sand for emergency uses.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, discussion.
The way I see it, it's part of the project, and it should be included.
Is that offered today?
I know John will do the right thing, and, but if we don't put it in here in black and white, I feel better that it's in black and white in here. It's, now's the time to plan for it.
The problem is, is you're putting a bucket of sand without kind of engineering where you'd want it to be.
With all due respect, one bucket will be used in a harpy. Again, we go through a pile during a storm, so as I, as I've stated, we're going to continue to provide that service at one, maybe two locations, like a couple of them mentioned. I'm just not comfortable that this is the site to have a bucket of sand.
Well, part of the problem was maybe people bringing trucks and filling them up and then scrambling, and that's not right, so that's why you're putting the gate up. But a majority of people maybe don't do that, and they just take a bucket when they need it, and that's not being...
Okay, I think we've had enough discussion. I think we're...
Can I just add that, you know, what I'm hearing, the concern I'm hearing from Frank is this concern I have as well. I've heard this from other people as well, you know, is this going to go away? Or is this going to, you know, is this going to happen because this is a service we use? And, and I take John at his word, I'm just concerned that this is something that could just kind of go away, or get, you know, slip through the cracks.
I don't...
If it's not articulated that this is an existing service that the residents want and expect to continue, if somebody decides to take that away, then that should be brought up and have a discussion with us, with the selectmen or whatever, but, you know, there are things like parking that we conditioned that had off-site, but we allowed that, you know, the off-site location is acceptable, but it's part of this plan, and this is a service that is part of the DPW facility, that, you know, unless we want to just leave it open, that it might happen or it might not. Just to reference the fact that whether it be provided onsite or off-site, that the facility shall accommodate this, this service. I'm afraid it's just going to too easily get forgotten.
Mr. Chair, I agree with the concept. I have a hesitancy, I think I share with Jennifer, of exactly what you said, it's a service. Permit questions are answered on the site. If I have a concern that permit questions have to continue at that site and can't be on another site, is that something we write in? If it's a service provided by the town, we have town meeting, we have a Board of Selectmen, if a service goes away or has changed and we're unhappy with it, we have a public forum to do it, but I'm very hesitant when you have a service that is, may have been done at the site, but is unrelated to the site, writing that in to here.
I have a response for that. I was thinking about it. Say there's a car dealer across the street says, well, I'm going to provide sand to every customer, and he's in the same location, he's the same issues with the wetlands around him, the planning board is going to need to be aware of that, say the building, new building, whatever, and, oh, you're going to put a sand bucket there, all right, well, let's, let's be knowledgeable about that, let's acknowledge that, and put in a condition that if you're going to put a sand barrel there, it shouldn't be so, so X, Y, and Z, and there's conditions with it.
But we're not, but if he wants to remove the sand barrel, we don't have the right to tell him he can't remove the sand barrel.
No, that's not, that's not what the condition is here, is that, that there's one made available in a place where the DPW director feels it's...
But that's unrelated to the site, so I have a concern...
Well, it's totally related to the site.
I have, I have a concern where you're telling the town, related to this site, to do something someplace else. I think it's two different jurisdictions, and we have a mechanism within this town to handle it, as opposed to this mechanism.
I don't want to write that particular condition in, because number one, I think if you're going to have a pile of sand somewhere, you need to, I'm going to say engineer it for, I'm not sure that this locate, you know, we spent a lot of money to keep the salt out of the wetlands around this area. It is in the area of watershed protection, and just to say that we're going to have a bucket or a pile of sand outside near the parking lot, just to me doesn't seem like the responsible thing to do. I am not, if there are enough people, even if there was just the five members of this board that, that really wanted sand, we all know how to make such a stink with the Board of Selectmen, that, that sand won't continue, and, you know, you've placed enough your ashes, too, you know, that type of stuff will, will continue.
And I think it's something that's just happened over the years, you know, when I was chairman of the Board of Public Works and you were on that board, I don't think there's a policy that exists that says that we're going to provide sand to the public. It, it just happened over the years.
It's appreciated.
It's appreciated, yeah.
I get my bucket load every three years.
It's also taken advantage of, too.
Yeah.
So I think we're in a position now to put some controls on that.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not a planning board condition that's going to do that. It's going to be the Board of Public Works or the Board of Selectmen that's going to do that. The Board of Public Works, but...
Okay.
Well, my, the condition is...
We have, we have a, we have a condition before us. I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of...
So you're just voting on his condition.
Yeah, that's correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so now you've got another one.
Yes, and that we, that quotes are for solar panels being purchased are provided to us as well.
Hey, what do we do with quotes? We don't care what it costs. That's not one of the things that we can do with.
Well, I think on every town project that comes before us, I am concerned about the cost, and I would like to see solar panels be part of this project, but if it's, if it's doable, and if it's not doable right away, then it's something we can look at in the future, and compare the numbers from 2016 to, well, 2017 might be better, or a lease situation might be better, or purchasing. We have to have the numbers as part of the planning in order to understand that.
I respectfully submit that we have no jurisdiction over that. But you made a motion, I believe. Is there a second? I see no second, so we're back to the original motion.
Thank you.
Okay, is there, and so further discussion on the overall motion. Seeing none, you're ready for the vote. All those in favor of site plan approval with conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
For your time, your consideration, your excellent input.
The, you're going to stick around and talk about sidewalks, please.
Going nowhere.
Are you guys in a rush to get this filed from us, or is it something that might wait a week or two?
We can wait.
We can wait, yes.
Okay, I just didn't, you know, where are you in your process of getting bids and stuff?
We are going before the permanent building committee on Thursday evening. We're going to look at what our final design looks like, what our bid alternatives are. We're hoping to get this on the streets when, Jeff?
Like six, two months, basically.
So we're about two months out. We're, we're looking at somewhere in August, late August, early September to issue the award, raise the buildings, and have it written coming.
Okay, so you're going to try to get foundations in before winter?
Absolutely.
Maybe steel up? You're going to be close.
Yeah. But this helps us in that process, so.
Okay.
Again, thank you all very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, why don't we take up, oh, we got, we got one more vote here that we got to make here, and then we'll do sidewalks. This one's really a quick one. To accept the formal withdrawal of the active site plan review for legacy farms, special permit, and the special permit amendment for the northwest, northeast, and North Club Villages Legacy Farms, and also, let's, that'll be the first one, and then we'll talk about whether or not we give them a waiver or filing fees for the second time around. So let's, let's first accept their formal withdrawal, take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded. Further discussion?
Discussion, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't understand the benefits of them to do this. If they don't withdraw it, and we have new members, and it's June, and we just take time to catch up with the new members of all the...
They can, if you're not, if you haven't started the hearing from day one, you can't vote on it. So they would be down to maybe six votes.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe five, and quite frankly, they feel better having the full nine members to vote on it, so that one of us just doesn't say no and gives them a denial, you know?
There is no benefit to them to do this, believe me. They'd rather not do it.
Right, they're not, they're not happy campers, let me put it that way, but...
It did seem like they were making the progress and changes that were...
They're, they are making progress and they're whatever, but then, quite frankly, today, they got scolded by Jennifer and myself in two different votes. they got scolded by Jennifer and myself in two different modes. They emailed us all the plan changes that they had promised us on the day of the meeting. And that is, I'm going to say disrespectful to the board and our consultants, because how do you have a meaningful discussion when you haven't had any time to even digest them? So, you know...
That's...
Yeah, that, so, anyway, the motion in front of us is to withdraw.
Thank you.
Ready for a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, then the next one is a respective waiver from any filing fees with a new submission. I think that's a reasonable request, given that it's actually board members that have gone down, you know, because of that. And I don't have a problem with that one.
I have a little bit of a problem because they're deciding to, to do this...
They almost didn't have any option with our two resignations. They really didn't.
But they didn't, I mean, because you weren't going to finish it. You have, they would have had tonight and May 9th, and there was no way you were going to finish that review in two meetings.
Right.
Unless you guys are superhuman.
And...
All right, so it's nothing on their end, right?
Yeah, right.
It's really us, so I don't see why, it is an unreasonable request.
I don't have a problem with it.
Request a motion to waive any filing fees with the new submission, resubmission.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, ready for, for a vote? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, are we talking about a lot of money here?
I think so, but I'm not sure the exact number, but it's in the thousands, so...
Well, the consulting fees, really, it's...
Yeah, well, they're still, I think we'll have to pay...
They're still on, they're still on the hook for the review fees.
Yeah.
I don't think it changes our...
Yeah, no, this is just like filing fees.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we'd get so many per unit or something like that, and, you know, it's, that's what that way, I think we'd, okay. So it's on the, the motion is on the table, I believe, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries.
Can I just ask, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So they've asked to be put on the, they're intending to file by the end of the week, their new application.
We will put them on an agenda when we get confirmation from the selectmen, when we're going to have all nine members.
So, I, to address that point, that's been advertised since April 12th. There have been no applications or interested candidates, and so according to Elaine, they're not intending to schedule any meetings until they have interested candidates.
Okay.
So...
Okay, well, I, I know of two people that are interested in...
And they need to get information to Elaine.
Okay. We'll, we'll make sure that that happens tomorrow, so...
Okay. So let's say that that all happens.
Then we'll talk about it agenda time.
Okay. So you don't want to talk about it right now?
No.
Okay.
We've got enough what-ifs going on, okay? So let's talk about something that we all love to talk about.
Well, one more, so I got, you and I, I don't know if you saw it, because it was an email late this afternoon from Roy about his master permit special permit amendment. I wanted to know if we could get that done before the election.
Oh, is, is, is that also, we've got to continue that?
So, well, he didn't send a withdrawal, and so we either have to continue it tonight for the next meeting, if we think we can, he just sent an email with a deal with it.
Yeah, I think I saw that one.
It just said, is it possible for us to...
Let's, let's continue it to the next meeting. Quite frankly, I'm not sure we're going to have the information that would allow that to go. This is the, adding the 180 units, until we get his, his LNG safety plan, I'm not ready to vote for it. I mean, you know, we're not going to add units to something if we don't have a mitigation plan.
Or should I tell him that?
You could tell him that. I've told him that today, too.
Oh, you did, okay.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, we're not going to add to the, to the special permit area until, till we know we have an answer. And they are working on an answer that might allow things to go ahead.
So is 151 Hame Row only need a half an hour, you think, on May 9th?
Yeah.
At 8:30 on May 9th, and then the continuation.
Okay, so this is the special permit for the 180, it, uh, changed the master plan special permit to continue it to 8:30 on May 9th. Any other motions? Moved? Seconded.
Discussion, point of order?
Yeah.
All right, so can we just describe what happened? At 9 o'clock, we're supposed to meet about Legacy Farm North, and then they sent us a letter saying, okay, well, none of the members will vote on it, we're not going to get through it, and we just, we just accepted that, they're going to refile, and we're not going to charge them, and we'll look forward on that. So separately, they continued public hearing for the applications to amend the Legacy Farm's master plan special permit, was supposed to be happening at 9 o'clock tonight, but maybe they assumed that we're just going to...
No, Roy sent me, that's on, Roy sent me an email, that's what I just discussed. Oh, here it is, it's right in front of my face. Says, can we at least get our master plan special permit filing approved by the end of the planning board session, so we don't have to file this again? I think he's, that was his question, like, can you just continue it?
It's okay with him that he's not here.
Oh, he emailed, I know, he knew he wasn't coming here.
Yep.
No question about that.
So the motion on the table, can we get your question answered?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, now we're talking about...
Actually, sorry, Mr. Chairman, is there anything you need to add further, or are you...
No, um, I think they're still looking for comments on the construction management plan for Legacy.
Yeah, I have a draft of that, and we'll submit through, through the board.
Okay, you can continue to work on that, you know, as we're going along.
Very good.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
If you would copy that, this is the...
As far as I'm concerned, you can also continue to review the drawings that they just did today, too.
Fair enough. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we, to end this sidewalks, we have a huge list of comments from public, which is kind of good.
It's very good.
Somebody, somebody gets the word out, I guess.
And the survey is still open, right, John?
Yes.
Still open.
There's not a date, really, just whatever week, right?
I can tell me at least a couple of months. That was a couple of weeks ago.
So John, where are you for this town meeting? Do you have an article for sidewalks or anything, or...
There is a placeholder for sidewalks.
In, in an article?
Yes.
Pays, too. What has, either capital improvements or anyone else, budget-wise, are they willing to put money there at this point?
We haven't had those discussions, Mr. Chairman.
I, I would, I would recommend you wait a year, just because, and I love sidewalks, but putting something in on a budget item two weeks before town meeting is just asking for trouble. You know, we need more of a process, I, that, that's my opinion.
When we were, three, Mr. Chairman, when we were putting together our warrant article needs, through the town manager's office and discussions with Elaine, we talked about putting in a placeholder, so that if the community wanted to move something forward this year, whether it be the construction or design, that we had it there. Based on the numbers of folks, you've got 185 people that responded.
Yep.
There is a, there's an interest there.
Yep.
But I agree, so I'm not the finance guy, I'll put the number in there, and we can have those discussions with capital improvement and appropriations and the board of selectmen, and it's up to them whether or not they wish to move it forward this year, and they've got to find where that funding comes from.
I, I would, might take the mode of looking at the repair request, and maybe go strongly forward with repairs, because that, I think you can justify under, you know, tripping in hazard type of thing, and, and, you know, I mean, obviously downtown, you're probably not going to do that, because that's part of the whole big road improvement corridor thing, but, you know, repairs might be one that I would suggest you, you, you put on a priority.
We, we do have a budget, Adam, in our operating budget. It used to be only $4,000 per year.
Sure.
And I think that's why there are so many requests for repairs, but now it's $50,000 in addition to the $4,000, so we do have the funds to go out and to address...
Okay, so those, those are not necessarily coming out of the same bucket.
Correct.
Okay. Then the other area where you can maybe make a lot of people more happy is if you look at the short sections in this area. And then I think this board would like to maybe contemplate the big sections, you know, that's, that's the harder issue. But I mean, if you, there's a lot of places where the sidewalk misses for one lot, first time. The best example to me is, is Chestnut Street and Hayton Row, which is going to be right next to our dog park, which I got questions for at the Know Your Vote thing right before this, you know? And so, you know, it's one lot-ish with a sidewalk, and it may be tough, because there's a guardrail and stuff like that, but I know you know how to solve tough problems. And, but, you know, there's, there's areas where it's on a busy road with just a short section, you know?
That would also need funding, Mr. Chairman, so we'd have to bring that forward.
Yep.
One of the things that I was looking at, the sidewalks that we've built thus far have been, for lack of a better term, I'll call it easy, straightforward. There aren't a lot of implications with wetlands, with grades. When we're looking at some of these other areas, certainly we get into areas of wetlands, of relocating guardrail to accommodate of, of walls. So it might be worth it just to bring forward a plan of design.
Yep.
Because that construction number is, is going to be a wild card.
Yep.
To the chair. I'd like to recommend looking at the forgotten west side of town, especially along West Main Street, traveling along that, looking at the, and it's comment, lots of comments on there, along, like Maspinock, the fishermen along the road, and I'm just afraid somebody's going to get it one of these days. And there is a lot of people who walk and jog that stretch, and there is no room for error at all. So it's an area that's heavily trafficked, that does get frequent walkers, joggers, and I think it would get more. And I look at these people who are fishing with their kids and walking along that stretch along the railings, and just at dusk, somebody's, something's going to happen.
How many people walk in the wrong direction, the cars behind them, they trust, they wouldn't trust anybody these days with texting and stuff.
Yeah. Three, Mr. Chairman, that's one of those areas where...
And that's expensive.
It's expensive, because the, the, the road is maximized.
Right.
And then you've got the lake on either side.
Yep.
There's no room to put it between the guardrail and the fog line.
Right.
So that's one of those expensive ones. So if, if the board can put together a list of, whether it's, whether it's those short segments to, to make it continuous, or new areas, I'm happy to bring forward a smaller number to town meeting. But I, I, I look towards the, the board, because you've, you've done an excellent job of getting the word out there, and people have responded.
Could you look at these that have been identified here as almost ranking them, 1, 2, or 3, right? So 3 being very difficult, with 1 being very easy, and does that help prioritize some things? See, if you heard feedback from the public, if they're identified these, really, the top five, everyone else is 1s, 2s.
Mm-hmm.
And even within that context, right, the Chestnut to Ash one, right, coming out from 85, I would say that's kind of easy, right? There's plenty of shoulder right now, right? You're just going essentially up and hill and down to, to Ash. Now, I think if you were to kind of make Ash, take that left on Ash, then it gets tricky, because you don't have much shoulder, you're dealing with, you know... Scenic Road. Scenic Road, or, you know, it's not wetland, per se. Some of it, maybe wetlands are protected, then it gets a little bit trickier.
More expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Might a lot to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I don't know, the Woodville section of town that I'm in, but the route along Spring Street, Fruit Street, the Framingham, that everybody takes, that a lot of people walk around, there's, there's nothing there. So I know, I know that's far out, but maybe, you know, from Woodville, you maybe start reaching something like that.
You know, it might be nice to get Wood Street, Woodville connected, you know, like, like in front of the church to connect to the brand-new approved sidewalk in front of the DPW building, which would be another short section.
So that's, that's, we looked at that, it's 1.2 miles to go from where it ends at the church to Woodville. And I think that's an excellent one, because it brings in Reed Park, it gets folks out towards, to Woodville, gets folks out towards the new facility that's going to be built on Fruit Street, so there's a lot of...
I just think about that, and I just don't think people would use that. You have the whole group out of Woodville that stays out there, but who's going to really walk from Woodville? You know what I mean? I think there's a lot of better opportunities, where I see, like Ken's point, I see people walking all the time, where I do, it's your point, walking all the time. When you see people walking all the time, you're worried about them getting hit. But, by the way, you're not going to do anything with this election, it sounds like, for Town Hall? Town Hall, sorry?
Well, I don't know, I, I, I don't...
I was, I was just going to say that for the next one, if, when I go into the planning board, if you need to make the lead, sidewalks are my passion, so...
Oh, okay.
Give them a thought, and I love, John, I'll send it right there, I'd email John.
I'll tell you, you know, sidewalks, we got such positive responses on what we did, which is really great. You have any money left over from that last pick? Are you doing to Clinton Street?
We're doing to Clinton Street, and we're going to use the full remaining amount, which is just under $700,000.
So that, that's the last piece that you got money really for?
Yes.
Okay.
And in, in my 30 years of public works, the sidewalks here have been the most praised and well-received projects that I've ever been involved with, so...
So just for the comments, I didn't interrupt, but the sidewalks, you guys have been knowing it great. The sidewalks Legacy Farm did to come to town, why are they street level? That's silly. Sidewalks should be curb level, you know, like you raised them, like whatever it is to the berm. I mean, it just...
We did some that raised, but most of them didn't.
We, we had a discussion, the, the, the developer looked at the condition of approval, and we provided him with the specifications, the same construction specifications, and where there was a separation of, I think we, we called it 18 inches, we didn't require him to put in a berm.
I think that's what Elaine said, some, my loss, right? So I was going to chalk that down one of these days.
So where there, where there was no separation, he put in a berm, or he still owes a subber in one small section, but that's, that's why.
And, and the area going from Legacy Farms Road to the Athletic Parcel is slated to get sidewalk this summer for Mr. Mattel. Most of that will be bermed on the, the...
Is that Legacy South or North?
Legacy North.
What, what are the curves in Legacy South, on Main Road?
There are no curves.
They're not going to be?
Yeah.
That's ridiculous.
Well, that is...
I, I could see within those streets of the Woodville, but the main one, though...
The, the, what is that, sustainable stormwater control?
Lowland.
Lowland tract development, country drainage, yes.
The north is about, it's the same as well.
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
So there's $54,000 a year for repairing, and then there's, these sidewalk products are additional money. If we, we discussed this today, so, I mean, you've seen this, too, or...
Just saw it today, myself.
Yes, like, so I guess we need to digest and think about different ideas.
I, I think if you went in with millions of dollars two weeks before town meeting, that would be career limiting, that's personally, I mean, you know, I just don't think, you know...
That's why I would look for a recommendation.
It's a limit, yeah, correct.
Well, we do, we do not want to, we like you enough that we don't want to send you to slaughter, but, you know, maybe some engineering money to, to get it started, you could, you can kind of justify that, I mean...
And so Elaine also wanted some long-term thinking too about, from the master plan section for sidewalks, so maybe that could tie into John doing something next year, if we put some long-range stuff together.
Yeah. You know what we could do? We could tie up maybe some of the, planning board might have a little bit of engineering money left to this year, maybe we could, could hire a consultant to kind of map all this stuff for us, or something like that.
We've got a map of the existing sidewalks.
Oh, okay.
As part of our plan, last year, we did, we did an analysis of existing networks.
Okay.
So I can show that.
So you know where all the gaps are?
Yes.
Oh, so...
That actually is going to be a good plan to have, we can mark it up even.
I'll share that with you.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great, yeah.
So I want to say, John, you do a really good job, and all respect that DPW has before you, you've been the best that I've, that I've seen.
Thank you very much.
When I ask questions or bring up ideas, it's not meant as criticism of you, or anything you're doing, just additional viewpoints that I want to bring, and I totally respect the work you're doing, and appreciate that you're here, and...
Thank you.
If you leave, then I'm scared, so...
Okay, let's, let's get on with other things over in sidewalks, so we get out of here at 10. Thank you, John.
Thank you all very much, and again, thank you for your consideration and approval of our site plan.
Okay, the next item we bring up, the board's considered voting to recommend town meeting article 42. 42 is the easement at Cumberland Farms to allow our lane to get done, it is warped into a fairly small easement. Really, we're starting at the eastern side of the Cumberland Farms driveway, but it's a 10 by 12, or 10 by 15 foot area. Elaine, I think, told me, or Jennifer did, somebody today, is Cumberland Farms is okay with that, they're encumbered by another easement over that, so they can't do anything with it, so it's a, it's maybe a car length shorter than what I was kind of hoping to see, but I think we can work with that, and we're not messing with their driveway, too, and for a car, it might be the easier thing to do.
Sounds like it.
And, so anyway, that's, this will, if we go forward to the town meeting, we'll get something done first, and if it ain't long enough, we'll worry about that.
Down the road.
Down the road. So, look for a motion to recommend town meeting board article 42. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we've already talked about sidewalks, master plan update. Fran, Frank, I think you're the only section outstanding.
I sent a friend, at the beginning of this meeting, I emailed Fran a general update that needs some wordsmithing, but I think we're close, so...
Say May ninth.
Okay. How much time do we have on May ninth left? Did we screw that all up?
No, because we, no, we have 7:30 Ash, we have eight o'clock 151 Hayden Row, and we have 8:30 that we just did the master plan special permit, so if we, and if that doesn't happen...
Let's not schedule anything other than the master plan for the rest of that meeting, and, and would this not be the public hearing? But this will be, go for the, the three sections that we have not, as a board reviewed.
Okay, so, you want me to provide everybody with copies of what's been done so far?
In fact, maybe the whole damn thing.
Okay.
Because, because you, you want to read it in context, and we need it more than, as soon as these two guys get their section done.
Yep.
Yeah, Claire?
Mr. Chairman, if we don't get it in on May ninth, I, I do want to make sure that the board does revisit with the Cultural Arts Alliance, the plan, and it doesn't fall by the wayside, because...
Landscaping?
They have not done the landscaping.
Correct, I have a note, I've talked to a couple of people, they're, they were waiting for planting season, they, they are aware they have to do it, but I do have a note on my desk to follow up with them in like a month or so.
Alright, okay.
Okay, so we're going to do the master plan, let's see. We'll find out from the selectmen when the appointment meeting might be, whether to do it. I got phone calls from a neighbor to the library project who was very concerned that nobody had staked out the corner lots and, or lot corners, and he was a little afraid that they were site prepping across the line a little bit, but without it being staked out, obviously, it's kind of hard to tell where it is. The problem that I think he was frustrated with more than others, is that nobody in town hall answered his question. The building committee didn't do anything, the town manager didn't do anything, Elaine didn't do anything, I mean, it's, that's the more frustration to it. Quite frankly, I went over and looked at it from the fence, you know, 100 and something feet away, I didn't see where there was anything, you know, it's not like somebody took a bulldozer through the middle of the guy's backyard or anything like that. And there was, I'm not sure whether the garage in that one building was actually located on the other guy's lot at one point, you know, so if, if anything, I think it was back in that corner, but it didn't look like significant things were going down, but he was concerned that they hadn't surveyed it. Now, nothing is surveyed on that whole block, I think, for a while.
There was a survey done at the, when I was on the PBC, and there is actually a shortage, the designated distance of that block is actually shorter, is, is on the plans longer than the block is.
By three feet or something.
By three feet, and so I'm sure there's issues of exactly where the lot lines are.
And, and, but I think they resolved that by taking it out of the libraries parcel, so the library got to... How that happens, because my lot got surveyed when I bought the land next to me, it's, you take the parcel, and then each piece that gets subdivided in order gets placed down there, and then if you're the last guy standing, you get what's left, you know, and, and I mean, if you think you're getting 200 feet, and you get 187 feet, that's only what's left, you know, it's, something screwed up in the last 300 years, and, and, you know, you are, and so I think maybe that lot got subdivided from church place the other way, or either that, or the, the surveyor didn't want to fight with the guys and took it on the town's side, but...
The road widened, or?
It, you just never know, but, but the question is, I don't think there's a stake out there that says where that is, maybe it's because the stake was probably, might have been in the garage. I don't know, but anyway.
So at the end, there really is no answer for this matter from anybody in the town?
Well, the, the right thing to do is, is to go put, put up iron pipe where the damn lot is.
And who would do that, the building inspector?
No, you have to hire a surveyor, and the surveyor that found that discrepancy is the best one, because he's done all the research, and he would know where to go measure from and, and go put it in.
So I'm just wondering who would initiate that, I mean, here, you've got somebody who...
Well, the permanent building committee is, is the, is the ones that are in charge of the project, so, you know, that's something they've got to do. You know, maybe, maybe what we need to do is include in our rules and regulations in the past, that, that all new site plan reviews have surveyed with lot corners in place. I mean, there's so many pieces of property that don't have anything marked, and I always found knowing where your land is and your neighbor's land is makes for better neighbors. And like, you might not have to mow so much. Let's see, that's, that's all I've got, I think, any other comments?
I have one other item, just clearing mind to think. Davenport. Must be coming up to CFOs issuing, and those signs are still not changed on the stone walls, and since they have a history of doing things without permission, and then asking for forgiveness.
So fortunately, they're going to be coming back to you because they want to change their landscaping plan, and so Chuck Joseph was in my office today about that, so when I go back to him with that, and will mention, Ken and I already spoke about it, I will mention the sign, and when they come before you, you're more than welcome to mention the sign, but I will definitely bring it up to him, because I noticed that the other day, too.
Yeah, it, I, I saw the Claire when, 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 when I heard that they were coming back in.
Burned the cable for me, guys, because it was one of my points, so keep on it. I just wanted, is there any need for us to meet for town meeting, because they've booked a room for us, but...
I think you want to post it just in case.
We have a room already, but I just didn't know if we needed to post an agenda.
If the agenda would be simple to discuss any town meeting articles for, for, for that.
What time?
Let's, let's say half an hour before town meetings, so it'd be 6:30, and, and at this point, we've made recommendations on all of our articles, so I don't think we're going to need it, but in case something happens to pull something, and we can always cancel it, and that would be my preference to, inclination is it's going to be canceled.
It's May second.
Which is Monday, which is coming up pretty quick, isn't it?
One week.
One week, oh, and he's going to go ask for money at one week, oh, he'd get slaughtered. Anyway. I think we got everything taken care of. Anyone else got anything else? Confirm motion to adjourn? Okay, I think I heard a motion to adjourn and a second. Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.